Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. This is an open public meeting of the Neptune Township Board of Education. In accordance with Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, adequate advance written notice of the meeting was made by posting the schedule of meetings in the main floor lobby of the Board of Education Administrative Offices and by delivery to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Neptune Township Municipal Clerk. Advance electronic notice has been made on the district's website consistent with Bylaw 0164.6. In order to abide by the Open Public Meetings Act, Board of Education members may use their digital devices to follow the agenda, report out from meetings, and to view agenda background materials, but not to communicate with each other or anyone outside of the meeting. Fire exits are located in the direction indicated. In case of fire, you will be signaled by bell and/or a public address system. If so alerted, please move in a calm orderly fashion to the nearest exit. Postings have been placed on the bulletin board up front for everyone's use. Please do not remove these postings. You may obtain free copies of the documents from the district website or purchase copies by writing the Board of Education office. During the public session of this meeting, parties having comment are requested to address the president. The public is advised, in accordance with Bylaw 0168, an official unofficial audio recording of this meeting is being made. Pursuant to State Statute NJSA 26:3D17 and Neptune Township Board of Education Policy Regulation 7434, no smoking is permitted on Board of Education property. As a reminder, Neptune Township School District is a community for all learners, where we value opportunity, diversity, and accountability. Ms. Brittany, can we have our roll call, please?
Ms. Harris.
Excuse.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Hubbard.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Morgan.
Excused.
Ms. Perrier.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. West.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Madam President.
Thank you. Please note administration that is also present.
Can you fix your mic? It's really distorted.
I thought it was bad. Something's going on with the mic. I thought it was bad. I can't fix the mic. Is this better? Is this one better? I thought it was like... How about? How about now? No. Now? It's on. It's 100%. It's on. Now? Sad? I'm not a tech person for the district. Now?
It's still red.
Johnson, can we move this one over? Is it too far?
Try that one.
As you used to say, it's too far.
I can project now. I can do that. Hello? How's that? No. Okay. For those in the audience, I will use my outside voice, but I also have to talk into here so those on Zoom are able to hear. Can you hear my outside voice?
Yes.
We're good. We don't want to mess with the... We don't want to mess with it, Bishop.
Leave it alone.
Because we'll have nothing.
I'll leave it alone.
Right? Got to make sure we have the external as well. Okay. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So for those who just joined online, I'm screaming because those in the audience can't hear with the microphone system. I am not screaming at you online. Thank you. All right. We welcome our new student government representative, Ms. Rosie Cole. So we will have her to hand it to the board.
Hi. Hello? Okay. So our Art Student of the Month is Marley Lavoyle for Instrumental Music. Our Athletes of the Month are Julia Loth for Field Hockey and Jeremiah Montgomery for Football. If you see them, please give them a hand for all that they've done. We do not currently have a Writer or ROTC Student of the Month because it is just September. And then our regular Student of the Month, our Freshmen, Estrella Rodriguez, Sophomore, Delicia Sanchez Avila, Junior Luke Quarty, and Senior Joseph Molesco. As far as sports updates, our football team beat Tom's River South 41-0 Friday, and we will be playing Asbury this Saturday at Asbury Park High School. Our gymnastics team beat Tom's River North at their Tuesday meet, and many of the girls have consistently placed individually. The marching band will have their first competition this Saturday at Brick Memorial. In other news, auditions for the Fall Musical Songs for a New World have taken place, and preparations have begun for the show. The new peer leaders took part in training last week. It was great. I was there. Homecoming is October 11. The parade will begin at 11:30, followed by the game at 1:00. The theme this year is seasons, and the classes have begun to design their floats. Be sure to come to the parade and see all their hard work on display. We would also like to invite the Board of Education to judge the floats and take part in the parade. More details will be emailed to you. Voting for Homecoming Court took place on Monday. The court is our Freshmen Brandon Mayo and Vazai Nadab, Sophomore Kamar Parker and Mariel de Medina, our Juniors Essien Plummer and Morgan Martina Stewart, and then our Seniors Michael McGlenon, Joey Taylor, Gianna Flurgis, and Molly McGovern. Royalty among the seniors will be announced at halftime of the football game. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, we have a lot going on in our district with our students. And again, we welcome Rosie to our table. Mr. Hubbard, can you move our minutes, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be resolved the Board of Education approved minutes of the work session August 25, 2025, special meeting NJSB a training on August 27, 2025, and regular meeting August 27, 2025. So move.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Hubbard, seconded by Ms. Jones. Board members, any questions? Ms. Brittany, roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Perrier.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Dr. Crater Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me with this microphone? Okay. I'll try to shout. Use my teacher voice. Back-to-school nights were very well attended. Congratulations to all of our teachers and our staff. All of our principals talked about the importance of attendance since we're dealing with the chronic absenteeism problem. And I attended yesterday a high school meeting of the attendance committee where they brainstormed some ideas for dealing with that. This year, they also reported out that with their efforts from last year, they reduced the chronic absenteeism rate at the high school by 6%. So we're making some progress there. I want to remind Board members that we are being, I'll use it as a verb, CUSACT this year. For those of you who are new, CUSAC is our state monitoring system that stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum. We are evaluated in five areas: curriculum instruction, governance, personnel, operations, and finance. So we're getting those materials together for our monitors, who will be coming in after the first of the year. I did mention at work session that our unofficial graduation rate up from last year is 89%. That number will most likely be adjusted a little down because they pull out the five-year graduates from that number. And as Rosie said, Homecoming is October 11. We always love judging those floats. Can't wait. And I do want to thank parents for really helping out during our two-and-a-half-day transportation debacle with our bus company. And the timelines of that notification, I wrote those on the website. So if you're curious about that, I do want to thank parents. They were great. They were so cooperative and helpful. And I did also share with the board on Monday, we did finally receive an email from the School Development Authority. However, that email just said, "We haven't forgotten about you, and we will get that information to you." That was last Wednesday we received that email. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Crater. We will now move into our public forum. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and, in many cases, by unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the Superintendent of Schools is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to members of the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate Board Committee. The members of the Board Committee work with administration and the superintendent to assure that members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on an agenda for action at a public meeting. All personnel motions are at the recommendation of the superintendent. All agenda postings are available for public review. In rare instances, matters are presented to the Board of Education for discussion at the same meeting that final action may be taken. Time will be allotted now for public comment. Each speaker will be given three minutes when recognized by the presiding officer. Individuals wishing to address the Board shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their names, addresses, and group, if any, that they represent. Although the Board encourages public participation, it reserves the right, through its presiding officer, to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not in keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. The Board will not respond to questions during the public participation portion of this meeting involving the employment appointment, termination of employment, negotiations, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of, promotion or disciplining of any specific prospective or current employee. The floor is now open for public comment. However, I would like to formally, publicly apologize to Mr. Paul Zapka from the last meeting. We had a discussion last evening at the Shark River Hills debate, and he felt that I was lecturing him. By no means was I doing that. I offered a private apology, but because the action was taken in public, I want to publicly offer an apology. The floor is now open for public comment.
Thank you, by the way. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
What I said last night. I also want to preface what I'm going to say now with a note to anyone who didn't go to the meeting last night, that both you, Ms. Jackson and Dr. Crater, acted with a lot of restraint and with a lot of grace with respect to what transpired. So I'm eating up some of my time here.
They said they can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Is it on? How's that?
Oh, yours is good. You have the good mic.
Do I get?
I stopped it.
Can I just at least repeat what I said in terms of comments to both Ms. Jackson and Dr. Crater? Because you did. You exercised extreme restraint, and you exhibited so much grace in dealing with a very heated situation, and it should be acknowledged and appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, with respect to that meeting, there's a lot of open-ended questions. And I know we're not going to get answers, but I'm going to just outline three questions that I wish that you, at some point, will address for us. By the way, we live in Ocean Grove. I'm a taxpayer. I don't know if that means I represent the taxpayers or not.
Say your name, those who don't.
Paul Zapka. Okay. The first question I have is, last night, there was some discussion around capacity and consolidation. So you threw out some numbers, which basically, without knowing what the capacity of those buildings are, are meaningless. So I would ask that you please provide us with a breakdown of how many students are enrolled in each of the schools and the percentage of building space capacity that that represents. Another thing that came up last night was a lot about consolidation, especially out of the Senator and his remarks. And I would ask, what are the most visible opportunities for consolidation and shared services in the community, particularly between you and the township? I mean, he raised some questions there. And the last thing was that there was a lot of discussion about the county taking on accountability, as they do in Virginia or Maryland, for school administration. So the last question that I have here is, what's the potential advantages and disadvantages of having the county take responsibility for the local school district, as in those cases? And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will, Dr. Crater will research those and get back to you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? Please feel free to just come forward.
Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first board meeting. It's a pleasure to meet you all.
Welcome.
My name is Lauren Coleman. I am a new resident of Ocean Grove. My address is 146 Embry Avenue in Ocean Grove. I am a former public school teacher, a former NJEA Executive Board member, and now work for an educational nonprofit. So I'm here because I recognize the real complexity of the budget that you've recently had to pass and the importance now of being able to advocate and mobilize knowledge to all of us as taxpayers and community residents. Because of my background, I'm somebody that's been tapped in my local community to try to give people a sense. But I'm also very new to town. I've been here less than a year, so I'm missing a lot of historical context. I wanted to first thank you for the fact that is available on your website, which has been immensely helpful in terms of me turnkeying points around SDA districts, limitations there, and other points to them, so they can understand why things that they're considering or hopeful are not available. But the one question that I think I'm not prepared to be able to explain well when talking with community members at large is around why such a market increase in one year. Dr. Crater, I was at last night's meeting also and jotted down some notes that you had, where you indicated that there were modest past-year-over-year increases: three, three-and-a-half-ish, seven-ish, eight-ish, before this year's more exceptional increase. And I also know from my background in education that the S2 funding formula by design is meant to drive a greater share of local share funding. I think my biggest question is around whether or not there were early projections that we would need a market increase of this size for this year? And if not, where are there areas where your projections differed from the actuals? Say around things like charter school funding, health benefits, et cetera, that led to us maybe having to make up a difference? I recognize that we may not be able to answer that now, but I would highly recommend that you consider an addendum to the fact that talks about why a one-year increase of this regard based on past precedents.
I would invite you to come in so that you had a lot of questions. I would invite you to come in because you had a lot of questions in there that I can answer when we sit down, and you may be someone who can help us get that word out. So if you could email me, I would be happy to sit down with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Sarah Bing, and I live at 1 Pine Brook Drive in Neptune. I'm here tonight to express my strong objection to the district's decision to continue using the current transportation vendors, Seaman Tove, despite repeated safety failures and operational negligence. As a parent and member of the Neptune community, I urge the district to reconsider and take immediate steps to find an alternative. Let me be clear. I am not blaming the drivers. My concern is with the company's management and the administration responsible for the oversight. This vendor has failed families for years. Parents have repeatedly raised concerns about chronic lateness, poor communication, untrained drivers, and lack of accountability, all of which the district has known about. I personally experienced a serious safety failure when my then-three-year-old child's bus went missing for two hours. The company couldn't locate the vehicle, and law enforcement had to intervene. When I later reviewed the footage from the bus, I saw the company manager intercept the bus, fail to notify police, and then switch drivers just two blocks before it was found. That raises serious concerns about transparency, and yet the district accepted the vendor's account without question. That signals a troubling level of trust in a company with a history of problems, and these failures have continued. On January 21 of this year, during a Code Blue emergency, morning temperatures were at 10 degrees, and we waited 35 minutes for the pre-K bus before I drove my daughter to school. On the way back, I gave a ride to a family I found on the corner wrapped in a blanket after waiting more than 45 minutes for the bus. Later, I was told the substitute driver had been assigned, but no driver ever showed. No notification was sent, and three-year-olds were left standing in the dangerous cold. Now, only two days into the new school year, the same vendor was reportedly operating without valid insurance and was shut down by the Department of Transportation. If this is true, this isn't just a contract issue. It's a serious breach of legal and ethical responsibility. Then, just this past Saturday, the high school marching band missed a competition they prepared for because no bus arrived. Conflicting reports suggest that the district may have failed to reserve transportation. Regardless, it was another case of poor planning, poor communication, and disregard for students' time and commitment. That the district is still retaining this company is deeply disappointing. It puts students at continued risk and tells families that safety and accountability are not priorities. The consequences of these issues are already being felt. Families are missing work, paying out of pocket, or keeping children home. These aren't minor inconveniences. They are the result of the district's failure to plan and hold this vendor accountable. All of this while Neptune residents face the highest tax increase in New Jersey's history, driven in part by district budget shortfalls. Yet, instead of demanding better, the district continues to accept the bare minimum, leaving families to figure it out. If the district insists on continuing with this vendor, then several questions must immediately be answered publicly. What caused this insurance lapse? When was it discovered? How was it discovered? And what oversight failed? And what is the timeline for replacing this vendor? Our children and families deserve better. This isn't just a policy issue. It's about trust, safety, and basic respect for the people this district serves. And I strongly urge the district to end its contract with this vendor and find a provider who can meet the standards our students deserve. Continuing down this path is irresponsible. And now, I encourage other members of the community to speak up tonight and share your personal experiences with this vendor. The more voices we hear, the harder this becomes to ignore.
Comment?
Thank you.
What I would like to say is what many may not know... Well, first, let me say that safety is always our priority.
It doesn't feel that way.
Ma'am, we don't go back and forth. So I'm just going to, for everyone. That's not what we do. We don't have to answer your questions here, but we choose to do that when we can. So I want to say that safety is a priority for the Neptune Township School District. However, we must be aware that as a school district, we are bound by public bidding laws. So we are required to take the lowest bid. Seaman Tove Bus Company came in as the lowest bid. Additionally, when there was a breach with the insurance, once that was corrected, they are now in compliance. If Neptune chooses now to not stay with Seaman Tove, Neptune would be in breach of contract. They could sue us. We don't have the money to do that. I will defer also to Dr. Crater because she has other specifics as it relates to some of the day-to-day operational things that you raised.
So I'm not in the habit of defending Seaman Tove, but Saturday's misadventure had nothing to do with the bus company. Saturday's misadventure was our fault. It was our oversight. Staff members have been addressed because of that. My directive to staff was put in place a redundancy protocol so that this never happens again. But again, I'm not in the habit of defending a bus company. I'm perfectly aware of the trials and tribulations we've had with Seaman Tove. As Ms. Jackson said, we have to follow public bidding laws, and a piece of this is in litigation. So I can't speak to that piece of it. I did post on the website the timeline for when we were notified and what we did after that. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's on the website.
I have not actually seen that posted.
Yeah, it's on the website. Yeah, it's on the website.
Okay, on the Neptune Board of Education website?
No, it's on the main section of our website. It looks like it says.
Wait, on our website, meaning?
Neptune Schools.
Yeah, Neptune.
The Neptune.
WWW.
Yes, okay.
Check that out. It has a timeline.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Andish, and I live at 68 Pilgrim Pathway in Ocean Grove. And I would like to follow up on a question I posed last night and did not get a complete answer to. I posed the question as to whether you would voluntarily agree to a forensic examination of the school budget and expenditures. And I was told that that is done. That is not done, and you likely know that. The audits that are done for the state are entirely different than forensic accounting of the expenditures. And I would like to know if you will voluntarily have an independent accounting firm do a forensic examination of all of the expenditures of the district.
Yeah. We do have a forensic, as I stated, I was the one that answered the question at Shark River Hills. This is considered a forensic audit. It is done by O'Connor Davies Accountants. It is a forensic audit. They spend months looking at all kinds of receipts, everything you could imagine, they're doing it. We're not doing it. They're not doing it on our behalf. If we have findings, they report them in this document that Dr. Crater has. This is what is considered a requirement. It is a forensic audit. It is by a licensed public school accountant. You are free to review the information. I don't know what else to tell you. I answered the question last night. The question, the answer to the question remains the same.
Do you have a follow-up? Why did a township employee approach me and pull me aside last night and specifically ask me to re-ask my question? Because he said this is not a forensic accounting. This is the requirements of the state, and it is not the same thing.
Okay, so ma'am, I have no idea why a township employee, that's the township, we're the school district. I would ask the person who you talked to, ask them why they told you that.
So if we have another independent forensic examiner, will they be allowed to look at the books, or will we have to file a Freedom of Information law request?
Everything is online. You can look at everything. Everything is on our website.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. Hi. Carol McGurney, 58 Embry Avenue in Ocean Grove. I spoke, I was here at the last board meeting, and we discussed sale of buildings, possible sale of buildings. And we were told that you couldn't sell the buildings because the state purchased them. But I subsequently spoke to Mike in Senator Gopal's office, and he said that is absolutely incorrect. The buildings can be sold. The state just wants its own money back, and any profit comes back to the school district.
So ma'am, we discussed that last night. We also, Dr. Crater alluded to that tonight. We received an email after probably over two years of requests from the SDA to find out how much of each of our buildings have been bonded. We need to find out the percentage of bonds that are still available, that are still owed on each of those buildings. We have not received that information. The school district cannot profit from the sale of those buildings. I'm not sure why Senator Gopal's office told you that. We did not pay for the buildings. We cannot profit from the sale of the buildings. The state does have to get their money back. If there is a differential, which we can't seem to get the answers to how much is bonded, we may be able to recoup some of those funds. However, if you can push to get us to get the SDA figures that we've been requesting for over two years, we would gladly appreciate the help.
Great. If you can tell me who I should contact, I will.
The SDA.
The SDA. The other thing I had, and I know that you said at the beginning not to discuss contracts or anything, I don't know if this is contract issue or if it's a merit issue, but I happened to notice that one employee received in the school year 2022, '23, a 34.9% increase, and then in the school year '24, '25, a 29% increase. And I can tell you who that was.
No.
I can email that to you. It's in.
You can email it to me, but we can't talk about it publicly.
It's in the salary information of the entire school district.
You can email Dr. Crater. We cannot discuss our employees in a public setting without rice noticing those employees.
Okay.
Cannot do that here.
Okay.
Like to come up to Dr. Crater afterwards or email her. You're welcome to do that.
I will do that.
Microphone came back on.
Thank you.
Going to hold, oh goodness. We're going to try to. I was happy for.
For a second.
No. Now?
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to.
Don't touch it.
Good evening. Henry Muller, 338 Glenmere Avenue. You've seen me before. You know, I've been to the last meeting. I've been to two township committee meetings. And then, of course, I was at the meeting last night. Probably would have said something, but it was pretty hard to get a hold of that mic. You know, we go back and forth, and we ask you a lot of questions, and we poke at you, right, about different statistics and things. And what I said at the township committee meeting, I said, and I probably was in the wrong meeting to say it, I should say it here, is I think what needs to happen is you need to go back, take a look at the budget, identify the cost drivers, the targets that you'd like to achieve in reducing the budget to reduce this tax burden, put together a plan, and then present it to the public. Because you're telling me you talked into the SDA, you're talking to the state about the buildings. I don't know what you're asking them about. I don't know what the plan is. I don't know what buildings you're talking about. I think you need to come up with a plan of, we've looked at the buildings. We think we can move and consolidate to these facilities by maybe some configuration changes, which is an expense, but maybe a worthy expense, right? We've looked at staffing, and of course, you've got to be careful what you talk about publicly against staffing because you'll create a panic, right? But, but you have to look at staffing, right? And look at all those elements. Present that plan for that, for that study, for that looksee to us. Maybe let us participate. And then, at these meetings, instead of getting up and continuously to ask about the same things over and over, we can get a status of where you are with the plan, what you've discovered while executing the plan, and then what actions you're going to take as a result of the plan to get after this, this huge budget that we passed that isn't going to go anywhere unless we do that.
Tell me to answer that.
So Mr. Muller, I would like to remind you that Dr. Crater actually did exactly what you're requesting. She reviewed what, this came up in our August meeting. We were here for over two hours, two and a half hours. And she discussed the areas that the district was looking at to reduce costs. She, she talked about our number one driver is salary and benefits. She talked about, we are looking at and working with the SDA to find out how much is owed on buildings. She talked about establishing a task force. This was also reviewed at last night's meeting. So right now, we are in the infinite stages of working with the task force, waiting for information. She did say there would be public involvement, but we don't have specifics to give you right now in terms of where we are in the process because there are a lot of outside entities that we're waiting on their information. So we receive it, but she did report this out in August. She did say it again last night at the meeting. It might have been hard to hear, but she did say that. That is the path that we're going down.
I guess from my experience, it wasn't presented as part of a comprehensive plan with multiple elements that you were attacking to get after this budget.
So.
And, and, and that's all I'm asking for, is it to be woven together into a cohesive presentation to the public so that we know all the elements that you're doing. I may not agree on what the cost drivers are, and quite frankly, I'm going to tell you, we don't, all right? And we want to make suggestions that some of the other cost drivers need to be taken into account, right? And what would be acceptable resolutions, all right? And not just for me as a taxpayer, whose kids are done with school, but also for the taxpayers who kids are in school, right? So we need to think about all those things. But again, nothing cohesive and comprehensive has been presented to us as the hugest stakeholder you have, other than the kids, in this whole process.
I just want to respond to you, Mr. Muller. Thank you for your comments. And we are doing that. We will at some point have a comprehensive plan for you. Right now, there are a lot of moving parts, as Ms. Jackson said. We want to come to the public with some of these options that we've already researched and then together develop that plan. Remember that we're okay for next year. We're thinking long-term. So we've got that task force already moving. I've appointed subcommittee chairs to do some of that research. We're waiting for the SDA. We're asking for our elected officials to help us get at that information. So we have that, so that can inform our decision.
And I guess, I guess my final comment is, that's great. Thank you. But I think unless you present to us and we know all the things you're looking at, what you're going to suffer from is every one of these meetings is going to be, well, did you look at that?
Yes, we.
Did you look at that?
Yes.
Did you look at that? And that's what the exchange is for, so you can get on with what you've got to look at. Okay? And so I think that's the piece that's missing. That communicative piece is missing in everything we're doing here on both sides of the state.
We do appreciate that, and we will utilize our website and Dr. Crater's column in the coaster to make people aware when that information is available. Thank you for the suggestion.
Hi, good evening. Chris Saul, 310 Highland Avenue in the hills. Just a quick question. When do you start the planning for the, the next year's budget or the year after budget that the public would be aware and?
Were you finished? I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
That's okay.
We start about October, talking about what our priorities are for the following year. We really ramp that up about February. Because of this situation, we will be steadily working on this budget from October on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, ma'am, because you already spoke, you have to wait. You can't speak unless there's no one else in the public who wishes to speak. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak who has not spoken?
Good evening. Karen Mason, 105 Cardinal Road, Neptune. So I was at last night's meeting, and something that never was cleared completely. Mr. Gopal had some statistics from the state, and Dr. Crater said her statistics were different. We never got a conclusion on that. And that was disturbing because Mr. Gopal said they were statistics that he got directly from our school district. So that went to not feeling good.
Okay, so I'll share with you what Dr. Crater said last night. Senator Gopal pulled the information from a different J schedule. That wasn't the correct J schedule. Dr. Crater then shared, Dr. Crater then shared the documents from the correct J schedule. So if you look at it on it, there are a whole bunch of different schedules with information. So the numbers that were shared were not the correct, they were not taken in the correct context. So let me say it that way, and I'll defer to Dr. Crater.
I just want to explain a little further. So what we're talking about are two pages. We both got our data from the same source. The Department of Education, where Senator Gopal gets his information, taps into our most recent audit, right? That is the only information they have. Senator Gopal was using a schedule called J17, which is accurate in terms of data, in terms of describing certified staff totals from 2015 to 2024. But what I corrected and hoped to correct as respectfully as I could was the fact that that did not represent the entire staff because the newsletter said that we had, we had increased staff from 2015 to 2024 total staff. The J16 breaks it down into total staff. So my numbers are from the J16.
All right, so where can the public see that?
This is online.
On the website.
It does not look like this online. You go to the Budget tab, go to the website, and go to Budget, and then look for the most recent audit, which is 2024. And if you flip down to the J sections, you can see J16 and J17.
Okay. One other observation. I know that Dr. Crater and Ms. Jackson are the only people talking on the board. I'm just curious, we have all these other people up here, and I'd like to know what their roles are and what they're doing, and this gentleman on the end, I mean, we, I don't know.
Okay, so I can explain it to you. This is our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Christina. You met our Student Council Representative. The other members that are sitting here, they are board members. However, they do not speak for the board, so they only vote publicly. By Roberts rules, the chair speaks for the board. Dr. Crater speaks for the district. She's a superintendent. And Ms. Brittany, and I call her Ms. Brittany because I can't properly pronounce her last name, she is our Assistant Business Administrator. If Ms. Dela Salle were here, she'd be seated next to her, and she is our Business Administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And let's keep our fingers crossed that the microphone keeps working.
Hi, my name is Jay Shapiro, 26 Heck Avenue, Ocean Grove, New Jersey. I have a question for you, Dr. Jackson.
Oh, you gave me a doctoral degree. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Jackson. You said that it was very difficult to check on the, I guess, the bonds that are outstanding. So can I ask who you called and what kind of a delay you got?
So Dr. Crater and her office makes the calls because they handle day-to-day operations. This has been calls and emails probably over a two-year period. So because all of our district's eight buildings, we have seven online now because ECC is not operational, they were funded through SDA funds. So the issue is, is that the buildings have been bonded, rebonded, bonded again. So I assume that they're having difficulty in tracking down those records to see what the outstanding bonds actually are. But Dr. Crater can speak to the emails because she has a trail of them that she has received from the SDA.
The reason I ask is because I know that when I have a problem with my bank and a mortgage company, I can find that immediately. You're just telling me that it's so complex that it can't be done?
But it's not a bank and a mortgage.
So who supplies the bonds then?
The state.
The state? So there isn't somebody at the state level?
So technically, yes, there is, but getting an answer is difficult. And like I said, Dr. Crater has emails going back over a year, possibly two, requesting this very information.
Okay, and you said that the audit was a forensic audit. Can you quote the page on which it says that this is a forensic audit of the Neptune Public School System?
Can I quote the page? No, but I, it's available, it's right here.
Okay, so somewhere in that document that is online, it will tell us that it is a forensic audit.
We'd have to look it up and get back.
We can look it up and get back to you, but yes.
Please, thank you.
Make sure you share your information with Dr. Crater, please, so she can get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who has not yet spoken who wishes to speak? Seeing none, you can come up first, you can come up second, and if you have something to say, you can come up third, ma'am. And then the public comment will be closed.
I just want to ask if there's any plan to have the public vote again on the budget. I know we used to vote in April for it, and then that went away. Is there any plan to bring it back?
As it relates to the state, when you have your elections in November, there is no official public vote on the budget. However, every April, we do present the budget right here, and the public is invited. We advertise it in all of our, the coaster, the Asbury Park Press, it's on our website. Dr. Crater puts it in her column. So that would be the time where you come. You can see the budget presentation. It's in a user-friendly format, PowerPoint. She entertains questions. That would be the time.
So at that point, it's not a done deal, that you can still make?
Ma'am.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. A question about the bonding. I mean, it's, it's a loan. Isn't it, doesn't it go into your operating expense so you could?
Not to us. It's not to us. So do you want to explain how the bonds work with the state?
I'll be very honest with you. I'm as confused as you are with how the bonds work because what happens was, and this is way before me, so when Abbott money came in, that money was secured through bonds, we'll call them. Those bonds, over the years, the SDA sometimes rebonds them. So that's how they have cash flow, right? So how they get out from under that is a mystery to me. That's what we're trying to find out. What I've asked for is simply a list of every building, the status of every building, in terms of how bonded are they, and can we, if we sell a building or a facility, can we then pay back the bonds and capture some of that appreciated equity?
It seems like a no-brainer because the state's, they have to know.
It's above our pay grade. We, we're with you. It's above our pay grade.
We're with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You have a thing, Mr. Zapka, of closing us out at every public comment.
That's interesting.
All right, go ahead.
I just want to clarify the difference between a forensic audit and a regular audit. I think there's a lot of discussion here, a lot of confusion about it. And if you go to Deloitte Tuchy's website, you know, big accounting firm, I think they know a lot about both. They say a school budget audit is a routine process that ensures financial statements are fair and comply with accounting standards, right? You say it's normally done to make sure that the standards have been followed and that there's nothing that stands out as being kind of iffy, right? My, my words, trying to summarize here. But a forensic audit is a deeper, more specialized investigation into potential financial mismanagement, fraud, or wrongdoing, using forensic accounting techniques to uncover and present evidence. Not accusing anybody here, just want to make sure everybody understands the difference, right? When people start talking about a forensic audit versus accepting an annual audit that's being done. So that, that was my one comment. I also, I asked a couple of questions for you to consider, and there was another thing that came up in last night's meeting that kind of stood out, and you've got to laugh on your behalf, when it was said that there are three assistant, or vice principals, vice principals, right, at the middle school, at the 650.
High school, high school, high school.
I thought it was a middle school. But in any event, you know, my question is, why three, right? Especially considering concerns about the high administrative costs. And secondly, if you have three, why, how did their roles differ, right? And what specific, you talked about having four when you were there. What specific emotional issues are they trained to handle? Because that was one of the representations. So the question again is, why three? What, you know, what are their roles and how do they differ? And what emotional issues? They're not healthcare professionals. What emotional issues are they able to handle? That's it.
I just want to comment on your, on your comment about the mental health issues. One of our VPs was a guidance counselor, so does have that background, and that is his area of supervision. The others, I have sort of tasks assigned to them so that you're not waiting for an answer here. And the three is to really deal with the, the level of activity that's over there. It's a very busy place. So even the three of them are running.
How many kids?
1,100, 1,200.
1,100 kids, yeah, okay. I appreciate the answer.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you, everyone, for your comments. Mr. Zapka was the last individual. The public comment is now closed. Ms. Jones, can you move our superintendent's report, please?
Madam President. It resolved that the Board of Education approve items recommended by the superintendent under superintendent's report as per Document A, Items 1 through 17, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Jones, seconded by Mr. Hubbard. Board members, any questions? Ms. Brittany, roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Perier?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. West, can you move our finance items, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education approve items recommended by the superintendent under finance as per Document B1, Items 1 through 5, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. West, seconded by Vice President Thompson. Board members, any questions? Ms. Brittany, roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Perier?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman, can you move our transportation item, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve item recommended by the superintendent under transportation as per Document B3, Item 1, so moved.
Speak louder.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Hoffman, seconded by Ms. Perier to approve the transportation document, B3, Item 1. Ms. Brittany, roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard? Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Preier?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Preier, can you move our education special projects item, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve items recommended by the superintendent under Education Special Projects as per Document C1, Items 1 through 2, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Preier, seconded by Vice President Thompson, to move approved items recommended by the superintendent under Education Special Projects as per Document C1, 1 through 2. Board members, any questions? Ms. Brittany, roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Preier?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Vice President Thompson, can you move our special education item, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve items recommended by the superintendent under Special Education as per Document C2, Items 1 through 2, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Thompson, seconded by Mr. West. Board members, any questions in reference to these special education items? Ms. Brittany, roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Preier?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbard, can you move our student activities items, please?
Thank you, Madam President.